Y'all ready? Everybody ready on this end? Alright, probably one minute. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Winterville Town Council Meeting. Tonight is Monday, February the 12th at 6 o'clock PM. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Johnny Moore. After the invocation, we will stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your son. We thank you for allowing us to be part of this great community that we consider as Winterville. We thank you so much for this council. And Lord, we thank you for our staff and each employee. And Lord, especially, thank you for our citizens. Continue, oh Lord, we ask, to bless us, to lead us, to do your will, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. If y'all stand and face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome y'all here tonight. My name is Ricky Hines, I'm the mayor. And it's a pleasure to have a number of guests in our audience tonight. And hopefully, the ones that are streaming as well. What we're gonna do next is, we're gonna do a roll call, okay? So, first, I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Smith. Councilwoman Robertson. Councilwoman Harrell. Councilman Moore. Councilwoman Hawkins. Everybody's present? Next item up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'm making a motion that we accept the agenda.
I have a motion made by Councilman Johnny Moore. Second by Councilwoman Veronica Robertson, to accept the agenda as is, in a discussion. If none, please vote by using your clicker. Motion carried, thank you. Next up, we have recognition of new employees. If the chief will come to the podium, and Chief Williams. Will you come to the podium, please?
Mayor, council, I have two new employees to introduce. First Officer Taylor Crowder. Comes to us via the United States Army and Greenville Police Department. He has experience, well spoken, and we like him so far.
Alright, good.
We're looking forward to great things. Next Officer Joseph Roach. Much shown your model, comes to us from Pine Tops. Doing good things, he's still in his training program to get out on his own.
Thank you. I just wanna say, thank you officers, for joining the Winterville, we call the family around here anyway. So, but, thank y'all, you know, appreciate everything that you do for the town. Any questions, anybody?
Thanks, wow, thank you.
Next up, Robert.
Evening Mayor and Council, it is my delight and pleasure to introduce Andrew Gardner, our new leader tech. Andrew, don't let him show us something, pay that coat off. We're very fortunate to have Andrew, his first day was cutoff day. So, he didn't start under the best circumstances, but he did an extremely good job, we're very happy with his performance.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said earlier, Andrew, welcome to the family. You know, a pleasure to have you. And thank you for joining our staff. Next up, we have a proclamation, Black History Month. And the proclamation will be read by our Assistant Town Manager, Anthony.
Thank you Mayor, standing in for our town clerk tonight. He always does a great job with this. So, tonight, next on the agenda is the proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas, such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights and the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equity for minority groups and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. And whereas, much of the world, much of the town of Winterville's honor, strength, and stature can be attributed to the diversity and cultures and traditions that are celebrated by the residents of this great region. And whereas, February has been designated as Black History Month, in which we pause to reflect the contributions of the African-American community. And we recognize this year's Black History Month theme of black health and wellness. And whereas, the African-American has played significant roles in the history of North Carolina's state economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development while working tirelessly to maintain and promote their culture and history. And whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, intelligence, and perseverance, African-Americans have worked tirelessly to maintain and promote the lasting contribution to the town of Winterville, the state, and the nation achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society including business, education, politics, the economy, culture, science, arts, history. And whereas, this observation affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation and community. And whereas, such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights and the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equity for minority groups and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. And whereas, we join with all Americans in celebrating our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to promote, protect democracy for all people and recognize the vital achievements of our local African-American residents. And now therefore be it resolved, that I do hereby proclaim, February 24th, February 2024 as Black History Month, and express special commendation to the dedicated volunteers who have labored so diligently to make this observation a reality in our community. Witness thereof, I do send my hand and cause the seal of town of Winterville to be fixed this 12th day of February 2024.
Thank you. And again, this being Black History Month, we celebrate it, but to me, as Black History Month, 365 days a year. It's not just one month for us. So, with that being said, yes ma'am?
On yesterday, we had a program at the Depot, sponsored by the Historical Society. And it was a wonderful program, I've heard lots of positive things about it. It was sponsored by the Winterville Historical, I wanna say, and Arts, but I know it's Arts Society. They were there. We had our town historian, Mr. Riggs, who gave us an account about one of our local African-American people who had achieved much, Mr., forgot his name now.
Collins.
Collins, Alfred Collins.
Alfred Collins.
And I know that this program was, a lot of work put into it by Ms. Matt Nelson. And I wanna tell her that we appreciate that, we appreciate the society for sponsoring it. And if you didn't know about Black History here in Winterville, and I mean, like, local level, you would've learned a lot yesterday. So, thanks for the opportunity for our community.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am?
Yes sir.
Also, I'd like to add that there are different events that's gonna be happening this month. In February, multicultural, they have, they have different programs. And we do have a copy of those schedules. And what we could do is, can pass them out a little bit later. It's from, from Pitt Community College to Cornell, Christian Center, and also the Smith Center, again, at Pitt Community College. So, there is quite a few activities is scheduled for the month of February for Black History.
Thank you, thank you. Let me go back for a second. And our town manager is not with us this evening, 'cause she's under the weather. And so, we just wanted to pass it along, hope she's feeling okay, hope she's listening to us. And that's the reason why we have Anthony here, our sister, with us tonight. But, that's the reason why Ms. Parker's not with us today, alright? Next up, we have a public hearing. Steve, Stephen?
Evening Mayor and Council, we do have a public hearing tonight for an annexation. Alright, so we have Ainge Plaza Lot 25 and 33, annexation position tonight. It's a two parcel site. It's from Winterville Commons LLC. This location is where all of you have seen the Lowe's Foods Development. So, this is a 10.7 acre site on the corner of Beacon and Flower Drive. It's its own general business. It's where the, again, the Lowe's Food and attached developments are currently being developed. We notify the property owners within this area, as well as place two public hearings within the neighborhood. This is the site. Again, if you're driving past Beacon Drive anytime soon, you've seen a lot of development in this area. We're getting really close to seeing the doors open. Image of the annexation map. Staff is requesting approval of the annexation request. It would become official on February 29th. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public hearing now is open. You have three minutes to speak. And we will start with anyone that's not in favor of the annexation. If there's not, anyone that's in favor of the annexation can speak. Okay, if there's none, I officially close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the board?
I move for approval of the annexation.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Motion made by Councilwoman Robertson, seconded by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell. Will you please vote now, please? Okay, I'm sorry, hold for one second. We have some new technology, so we getting used to it. So, y'all just bear with us, but it's gonna help us out in the long run. New voting software. And while we waiting on that, the information that Councilman Moore shared with you all, is the Black History events, there are copies at the back of the foyer on your way out the door, if you'd like to pick up one, okay? Willie, are we ready? If y'all would, please vote, please. Can you please vote? Okay, motions carried, thank you. Next up, next up is our public, public comment section. And I'm tasked to read this here. The public comment period of 30 minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville. For an item included in the public hearing section of the agenda, residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites the public comment on the item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting except during the public comment period or as part of a public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes. And no more than three speakers may address the council on any single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by a speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a further council meeting, or may refer the matter to the town staff for disposition. Copies of the town public comment period are available in the rear of the assembly room. And tonight, we do have two. And the first one that is on the agenda is Ms. Valerie Tyson. If you could step to the podium and state your name, please? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, my name is Valerie Tyson. I live at 225 Boyd Street, here in Winterville. And I stand before you today in reference to a request. First of all, let me say I'm standing for the Green Pea Association Scholarship for, for the locals high schools. We, we give scholarships to each student, seniors, for outstanding performance and choosing of the schools in which they choose to go to. But this year, we want to add more to it. We want to, can I say it, National Women's Day, which is in March. We want to give honor to our councilwomen. And we want to have a ceremony for them. And what we're asking the town of Winterville is two things. We ask permission to use the community building at no charge. And we also ask that the city would, would grant us the request of paying for the catering services at that time. Now, the catering services will be done by Rio. And the price is, for 20 people, it is $6.50. For 40 people, it is $1,300. And I did have the list of all the items that were going to be served for that day. But, I left it in the car. So, forgive me for that. But anyway, I'm asking that you would please consider granting me, granting us, Green Pea Association, for the use of the building and the catering service being provided for that day. The ladies that we will be honoring would be Karen, Lisa, I mean Lisa, Veronica, Randy, Chantel, and Paulina, and Terry. So, if you would.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hawkins.
Good evening, Ms. Tyson. Thank you for offering that event on our behalf. I had a question in terms of the date, was there a prospective date that you had in mind?
Could you come back to the podium, please?
Yes, the date would be March the 16th. Because that's the only date that was available for the town council, for the availability of the building.
Any other questions?
Oh yes, Ms. Tyson, would this be an annual event?
Yes, it will.
And?
It will be held each year in March in celebration of the women.
And, okay, and then, you do have a committee?
We do.
Ms. Tyson, I do have a question, is Green Pea Association, is that a 501(c)(3) organization?
Yes, it is.
What time is the program?
The program is to start at 2 o'clock.
What is the duration of the program? Is it two hours, an hour?
Two hours.
Two hours.
Two hours, two hours and a half time.
Any more questions, anybody else have any questions?
One last question, what would be the name of the event that would be held for the councilwoman? Did you have a name in mind?
Yes, it would be Women of Excellence.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Tyson's? Thank you, Ms. Tyson. How do, what is your, how do y'all want to handle this? What is your pleasure? Do you want to seek more information and make a decision on it?
I think that's wise.
Okay, alright. We'll get back with her. Ms. Tyson, are we gonna? Who's taking the notes? Jessica? You could get with Jessica to get your information so that Terry or either Anthony can call you and get some more information, you know? Okay, and disseminate it to us, okay? Alright.
So, excuse me, are we gonna add this to our agenda for one of our upcoming meetings?
As far as a response to this?
Yes.
If we can get some information, I need a little bit more clarity on this. And meet with Terry and get some information, make sure. 'Cause you talking about catering and all that. Just to see, and we can get back with her.
Our next meeting that we have together is the 26th, if I'm not mistaken.
Of, solid ways.
So, we could add that to the agenda.
Right, we could add that to the agenda, yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
So, we add it to the agenda for our meeting on the 26th? That would be the first time that we're together to make a decision, I think. Calendar was kinda for February.
Yeah, February 26th, that's a 5 o'clock meeting, correct?
So, February 26th, 5:30 is it? Is it 5:00 or 5:30?
I think it's 5:30, I'm sorry, 5:30. 5:30.
You would need to come back, Ms. Tyson, okay?
It's decorating. Okay. Alright, next up, public comment section, we have Ms. Matt DeJesus.
Oh, my name's Maddie Nelson. I live at Twickenburg, New York. At the Train Depot in Winterville. Winterville started, started to celebrate. The mayor, the county mayor, the town council, the city. But we know that everybody wasn't able to attend, had a heart attack. And, but we appreciate it. They did an incredible job, it was so much fun yesterday, you should've been there. We also have a fashion show, one other, and also, there was Elizabeth Miller. Commission manager of Winterville Potter Academy School. And I love to see those children at our events. I love to see those children at our events. And it was recorded, uh, indoor events. But they, so we had a nice, I think, well, I'm here, thank you all for the nice show that you did on there.
Again, thank you, Ms. Matt. It was an excellent program. Uh, Ms. Councilwoman Rob, Robinson did speak on it earlier, um, quite an interesting fact about Mr. Collins that was one of the residents of this town, uh, an inventor, and, uh, I, of course, you know, learned some new history about the town of Winterville. But again, thank you all. Next up is, uh, the consent agenda.
I move for approval.
Second. Have a motion on the floor, uh, by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilman Moye, uh, for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? If no discussion, could you please grab your clicker and vote, please? Okay, thank you all, motion carry. Right, next up. You, isn't it, Anthony? Yeah?
White's on.
Well, okay. Okay, yeah.
Next item is the Recreation Advisory Board member.
Good evening. So the Recreation Advisory Board is composed of seven resident members with two non-resident members with one alternate who can either be a resident or a non-resident. Currently, we have one resident vacancy. Um, staff would like to recommend the current Recreation Advisory Board member, Katrina Jones, who is the current alternate and also a Winterville resident, to be, um, moved to the vacant position. And then from there, we have a list that you should have in your packet of, um, confirmed applications that are still interested in becoming the alternate.
Board members, do y'all see the list of names? Will you let me read the list of names?
Please read them.
We have, uh, John Powell, Melanie Miller, Jonathan Powell, Ms. Roach, Shetoria Roach, hope I didn't butcher her name too bad, okay? So basically, Ms. Jones is gonna, Ms. Jones is gonna rotate from, um, okay?
Alternate.
From alternate to regular board member, correct? All right. And then we just need to pick an alternate, all right, from the list of four names.
Mayor, you, you'll need a vote to, on the vacant resident position, which the recommendation is Ms. Jones, and then you'll need a second vote for the alternate position.
All right, okay. Can I get a motion on the first item to, um, appoint Ms., uh, Katrina Jones?
I move that we accept the recommendation to nominate Katrina Jones to the Park and Recreation Board, Susan Bacon.
Have a motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Dr. Harrell, uh, to appoint, uh, Ms. Katrina Jones to the vacant seat. Any discussion? None, please, uh, vote by clicking your clicker. Okay, motion carry. Now, we need to fill the vacant, uh, spot.
Vacant alternate.
Alternate spot, right, uh-huh. Do I have any recommendation on the vacant spot? Do you have a person interested for the vacant spot?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Miller.
I'll second.
Is there any more nominations? Any more nominations? If there's not any more nominations, I close the nomination process, okay? And? All in favor of Ms. Miller?
That's right, yes, sir. You, you've got the nomination, so we just need to, to vote to approve that, yes, sir.
Right, you can now vote. Okay, the motion carried, um, Ms. Miller, uh, as the alternate, Ms. White, okay? All right. Next up, we have, excuse me, uh, Robert, uh, with, uh, Electric City Appointment, uh, to the Board of Directors.
As you're aware, Council, a former Councilman Moore was our, the town's representative. What we will need tonight for you to consider is someone to replace Councilman Moore. This is a, a non-meeting intensive position, however, it is an important position. Uh, frequently, these people have the inside track on what may be coming, and they have a say in what's coming. Uh, but again, it's not a, a meeting intensive type position. There is a vacant position now that will be created when you, when you replace Mr. Moore. There's an alternate as well. That alternate can come from staff, from the staff level, or from a, uh, elected level. It is completely up the, uh, governing board. What we would ask is when Don recovers, whoever is adopted will need to come in pretty quickly in us.
We're gonna, we're gonna take care of that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, if we choose somebody.
I didn't have the inside track on it.
Yeah, you didn't have the inside track, but, yeah, we already got that motion in, in play, in play. But first, we got to do, uh, need a, uh, motion to remove Mr. Moore, correct? Uh, Tony?
That would be correct, to, to remove, uh, um, Mr. Moore and to replace Mr. Moore with another individual. You, you can do that in two motions or, or one, since it's for the same seat, either way would work.
All right. So rest in pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Mr. Moore, Tony Moore, from the, our representative on Electric Cities, and to appoint Ms. Smith as their representative.
I'd like to, uh, second, yeah.
Have a motion on the floor, uh, to remove, uh, Mr. Moore, Mr. Tony Moore, and to replace Mr. Tony Moore with Ms. Councilwoman Lisa Smith. Is there any discussion? If none, please, uh, vote by hitting your clicker. Motion carry. Uh, Lisa, you, if you will stay around before going closed session, uh, she would, uh, get you to sign, uh, the affidavit, all right? Now, we need to elect an alternate, correct?
It was your option.
As, as, right. Robinson?
I would like to elect, um, Ms. Robinson.
Please, I decline.
All right.
All right.
And I'm coming right on down the line.
Okay, moving on.
Dr. Harrell?
Um, I decline as well. I would, uh, elect Councilwoman Hawkins.
I will accept.
Okay.
Got seconded motion.
All right. Have a motion by Councilman Johnny Moore, second by Councilwoman Robinson, um, to elect Ms. Hawkins, Councilwoman Hawkins, as an alternate.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? If none, please vote by clicking your clicker. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, next up, uh, we have other geni, other agenda. Agenda. Oh, man. Excuse me, uh, other agenda items, and, uh, first up is a town hall meeting, um, citizens of Winterville, uh, town EMS, slash fire, town police, and town staff. Councilwoman Hawkins, right to you.
Yes, good evening. Um, in regards to a town hall meeting, I have been speaking for a town hall, um, event where the citizens of Winterville can sit and have a dialogue, not only with our law enforcement, but with our fire, our EMS, um, any staff person who serves us, serves the citizens here, to have a dialogue where we can ask questions, to get to know them at a, at a different level, um, as opposed to just service. This is something that I have been speaking for since 2020, and I met with Town Manager Parker, as well as our mayor, um, after our orientation meeting, and, um, this town manager's, Town Manager Parker is not present, so mayor, I will ear to you, um, we can either pause the discussion or move forward, um, or I can continue on speaking in terms of what we discussed, but I'll ear to you for your guidance.
We, uh, we have a decision, and I'm gonna let Assistant Town Manager explain.
So, yes, we have, uh, um, information from Ms. Parker regarding what was discussed, and it looks like, um, make sure I get it right here with everything that's going on this afternoon, the last thing I want to do is mess that up, but, um, having a, a meeting scheduled on March, Thursday, March seventh, from six to seven P.M., to her recommendation, um, the meeting would have a moderator, a moderator, and, uh, questions will be forwarded to the moderator on the index card, uh, for consideration and discussion. She, she recommended Thursday, March seventh, from six to seven P.M.
Yes, and I believe that that's accurate from our conversation, and what we wanted to do is have a moderator and also have an opportunity for citizens to, uh, share their questions where we can screen some of them. We don't want, uh, the, the town hall to be a calling you out session, but we want it to be a calling everyone in. We believe that we are greater together, and dialogue will help us forge our way forward. Um, and so, um, once we have the meeting on March seventh, I am prompt and poised to, um, be in contact, I have already been in contact with Pitt Community College, um, and readily available to have a tentative date set. Once we have that set, we will then, um, send this out to the public.
Okay. All right, the next item is?
Mayor, you, you might want to, um, get either of, probably these things, you just have a motion to set it up on that night, so we've got something.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me back up on that.
Oh, mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We are scheduled to have a meeting at four o'clock on that Thursday also.
I, I believe the intent was to roll from one meeting over into the other.
So, so we'll roll right into that meeting also, okay? I just want to make sure that we, we know that. And use of that meeting last, what, from four until five?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we'll have like a hour space?
Is this really the, this an agenda?
Agenda work.
Agenda, yeah, uh-huh.
You use the last for about an hour, then we have an hour break, or do you?
It was six to seven, I think that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's bigger, six to seven.
Okay.
Because the agenda review is basically, you know, I think the staff will be able to roll right over to that. It won't, uh, deter them from getting over to where we need to be for them to be at.
All right.
So, you know, yes, ma'am?
Where's, is it near or over there?
I think, my recollection, I thought it was gonna be here. It's gonna be here in the chamber.
It, yeah, it's here where we typically have the agenda review. Um, and if the agenda review does not go throughout the duration, perhaps it can start a little before six, but six to seven was the time set.
So basically, right now, we need a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion, um, that we have the town hall meeting here at the Winterville Chamber at six P.M. on March seventh.
I second.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to have a town hall meeting here in the assembly room, uh, chamber, uh, on March the seventh, uh, from six to seven P.M. Motion made by Council, Councilwoman Dr. Harrell, second by Councilman Johnny Moye. Any discussion?
I have, I have a question for clarity or justice. Now, when the motion was made for the town hall meeting, I want it to be clear that it is a meeting for the town hall with the citizens, as opposed to it being a town hall meeting. Am I being clear? Motion for the town hall meeting, so my first item was for a town hall meeting, which will be at Pitt Community College. So just for clarity, the town hall meeting that we're having on March seventh will be to discuss the intricacies, correct?
No. This meeting right here would be, is to meet with the citizens. Citizens can give their input by writing what they would like to discuss on a index card and have a moderator read it.
That wasn't my clarity. I mean, that was not what Town Manager and I and you discussed. We discussed it being held at Pitt Community College. That is the source of my clarification.
No, ma'am, that wasn't, we didn't name a place as far as where it was gonna be held. We went from being a, trying not to get off in the weeds, but it went from being, um, uh, formed to a town hall setting style meeting, and we were said, we will get back with you and let you know, um, the, the time and the place. That was the discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna be accepting of that. I am happy to have a town hall meeting anywhere. I hope that the space can hold of the citizens of Winterville right here, and if we have overflow, uh, then I hope that we can accommodate, uh, the overflow. But, and, and no disrespect, I just wanted clarity.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's no problem.
On the motion.
Okay. Anybody else?
Do you think it would be better if we didn't call it a town hall meeting? Because you say town hall meeting, you know, it means one thing to, one person and another thing to another. Right now, I see that they can, the, um, because we're, I guess, we're all thinking that it was citizens coming in, asking questions, you know?
Right.
Uh, the town hall, but if you think that that would be misleading to the citizens or whatever, let's call it, uh, citizen conversation or something like that, to let them know that this is not a regular town. to let them know that this is not a regular town meeting, you know? But, uh, I think all of, all of us, are we understanding that it's citizens coming in, asking questions? I don't want to speak for anybody but me.
Um, where it talks about on the other agenda items, it specifically says that the citizens of Winterville, so on and so forth. So that was my understanding from what's printed here.
I didn't, I didn't realize that you were using that like a planning for a town, for a big citizen conversation.
So, so as I have been speaking the entire time, I was actually asking for a town forum. Mayor, the Town Manager and I, we did not want, we did not think it would be, uh, community friendly or citizen friendly to have a forum. We want it to be a discussion, dialogue and/or questions. Uh, another phase of that was to make sure we had a moderator and to also make sure that the questions were screened. So if we're having a town hall meeting from 6:00 to 7:00, I'm trying to envision a screening questions and, um, selecting a moderator and s- and stuff like that, I, I honestly, yeah. So I did not know it would be right at March. I'm happy to have it at March, but just the, uh, intricacies of how that would look, I don't know if that can happen within an hour. But I'm going to take what I, I'm going to take what I believe is a step forward, um, and then we can work that out. Um, um, Councilwoman Robertson, I would also agree with you in terms of, it doesn't have to be called a town hall meeting. It could be conversations with citizens or citizens connections or conversation counts or whatever we decide right here. But I think it's a move forward and whatever we decide here, we could change the name.
Call for the question, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Uh, I call for the question.
Okay.
So at this time, we're gonna move on, uh, with a vote.
Oh, uh, no, uh, Mayor, yes, I was waiting for the question that she answered, then I had a question concerning the same thing.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, my question is, can you have call in for questions? Or text questions that will be sent in during that, during that hour? I'm, I'm asking, do you have to be present? Or can you call in or can you text your questions in?
And that is an excellent question. Um, we did not think of that, but I think that those citizens who are unable to make it to this setting should have that opportunity. Again, um, Assistant Town Manager, you're present, you're probably privy to, I don't know.
I could, well, I could, from a technol- technological standpoint, I think, um, there, in the future, it would be possible, but I think in the, since it is a fairly short turnaround period, I think a good idea was any citizens that may want to have questions submitted, email them to the town clerk and those questions can be included, um, in that setting that night. And so, um, it might be a good idea to maybe have a cutoff deadline or time that we could publish, um, prior to the event, so that there's not stuff coming in, you know, five to 10 minutes prior to the event happening and those questions getting missed. So that would be my recommendation. I also feel like the moderator will probably be somebody outside of the organization. So with that being said, um, I'm not sure who she's planning on using, but they may have resources for a different type of setup in the future, but in the interim, I think that would be a good compromise.
I do as well, and with it being, uh, about three weeks, three weeks till the date, um, I think, um, moving forward or after the meeting, we can probably talk about how we will send this out to, uh, citizens and letting them know what date, you know, as of whatever date they have to send it in by. So that should be, you know, something we do right away, but thank you.
Okay. Now, the question, can we, can we vote? Okay. All votes are in and the motion moved forward with the town hall, um, meeting on March day 7th, uh, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Okay. Uh, next up, um, we have Ms. Hawkins, uh, intersection of Old Tar Road and Vernon White.
Yes, good evening, I wanted to speak in terms of the intersection of Old Tar Road and Vernon White. Um, this was, uh, brought to my attention, uh, about close, closely after Christmas, when there was a story ran on WITN, um, with a resident, um, and her family who had a concern about the one, um, stop sign on the intersection of Old Tar Road, um, and Vernon White. Um, I wanted to bring this forward because that area is, for me and what I can see, uh, hard to get out onto Vernon White, hard to get back in, um, onto Old Tar, hard to get out Old Tar Road. If you go during rush hour, you're standing there a long time. I wanted to know, uh, as a town council, what we could do, uh, maybe temporarily, uh, maybe to put some safety measure there in place. I know DOT is doing a, has a widening of Old Tar Road scheduled. At the same time, daily traffic, um, what, what can we do? I wanted to bring that forth. Um, this is something, um, that I feel is pertinent that we discussed and can maybe, uh, put our resident citizens at ease of us moving forward with making some sort of safety step, uh, and putting that in place.
May I ask a question? Correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but those are state maintained roads, correct?
Yes.
And so, us as a town doing anything with that is not necessarily what we desire to do. Um, state maintained roads, we want them to be state maintained. That funding would come from them. Um, we do know that the widening project is underway, correct? So I don't know that there is anything as a town that we can do at this point. Is there any, anything that I am remiss on?
And also too, there's gonna be a, uh, redesign at that intersection. So they're gonna redesign that intersection, so it goes parallel with Tab-
Tabbert.
Tabbert, Tabbert. And there will be a stoplight there. And I think Anthony may have sent out the video that you could see it.
We, we also have available for everyone tonight to see how it will be realigned.
Realigned, right.
As you know, this project is, it is several years out, um, two, two to three at least. Um, and so it-
But as you can see, right-
This is how it'll look when it's, when the project is complete. Um, I do feel like the council could reach out to NC DOT or have staff do it to re- request something, but, um, historically, that has not really been fruitful. However, it's up to the council to make that decision if they would like for us to reach out and as far as any changes that they might recommend in, in the interim.
Um, first, can we explain, uh, looking at the map? Um, what I see is one stop sign. What I s- can somebody explain that? I'm not an expert, that's not my expertise.
So that will be a signalized intersection.
So it's going to have a light there, which is great, what, which, which is what we need. Um, and I don't mind reaching out to DOT if somebody can give me, uh, whatever contact information.
The regular, the regular section, right.
So this is where-
Right.
This is where the road is currently connecting to Old Tar.
Yes.
Right now, and this is the redesign over to the right and you'll see the big curve. And then this will be a signalized intersection and this area will have mediums.
And Assistant Town Manager, you say this is about three years out?
I can get a more concrete, um, last update I had from NC DOT, they were still acquiring properties, so it will not be anything in the very near future within, I would say, you know, 12 to 18 month timeframe at all.
And so with the, thank you. And so with this being state roads, although it's state roads, there, for me, and I will communicate this to DOT, there has to be something, cones, walkways, something, braces, uh, gates, something that can be done to, uh, because when you go to that intersection, you're on your own. You are on your own going out there. And you're looking, you're looking, you cannot go, can- It has to be something in place, and I know we had someone to present, um, safe street measures, temporary measures, um, back in December, if I'm not correct. Um, so I'm going to extend that again. And if that, that cannot be utilized as some sort of, um, preventative, uh, reinforcement, um, I wanted to bring that. Can, can that be used? What, what can be used?
Well, you know, when you were speaking and what you're speaking of, I was thinking about, um, the measure that they took on Main Street. Uh, on Main Street, um, we had the same problem. And what they did was place a four-way stop sign there. I, I hate that, I mean, I don't get me wrong, because you s- you slow up the traffic and you cause a lot of inconvenience, see? But at the end of the day, if you want to try to, eh, to help soften the situation at, at a cost not tremendous, I, I think that that would be an option. That could be an option. Uh, only thing I'll be afraid of is the traffic is backing up from, um, Vernon White going back towards, uh, Main Street. Uh, there is a lot of flow of traffic coming from, from that, from south going to north. Uh, but there would be an option, you know, that we could look at that wouldn't be so expensive.
Can I make a suggestion? Could I, um, make a suggestion that, um, Ms. Hawkins, if it was set, you know, if it would be all right with you, that we ask staff to communicate with DOT our continued concerns about the intersection, that intersection, I won't call the road, roads Vernon White and Old Tar, and, um, ask them if there are any safety measures that they can enact to, um, eliminate the danger to drivers or whatever, you know? I, I'm not, I probably not saying it right, but I hope you get the idea of what I'm saying. That would, you know, we realize it's three years down the road, but right now, we want to ensure the safety of our citizens. We, we do have some concerns. Would that be something that you would agree to?
Absolutely. Whatever can be done to ensure safety, and even when we're thinking about backup traffic, I would rather have backed up traffic than someone, uh, in a collision. Um, so yes, Councilwoman Robertson, um, if staff can reach out to DOT, uh, because they have the history on it, uh, I, I would, I would, um, I would like that very much. And if I have to add my voice, um, in terms of that or be on any call or any correspondence, I don't mind. Um, and the sooner the better, and I thank you.
Will you make the motion?
Can I add one more before any motion is made? Um, I, I do believe staff has contacted DOT already. Um, however, I do not know that we have any results back from the conversation that was had. So I do, I do want to let council know that we have been in contact with NC DOT regarding the concern. Um, and I also believe there were some numbers looked at internally on the number of, uh, call volume from vehicle, vehicular accidents. And I believe over the past five years, that was around 20 vehi- vehicular accidents in that intersection. So, um, just wanted to give that piece of information, I'd be remiss if I made it in front of an out.
And also too, we have, of course, myself, Johnny is an alternate now, Anthony is on, and Stephen as well. We sit on the, um, was it MPO? And so you could pass that on to us, to the MPO, and we can get some answers, because we're sitting there with DOT. So we will be glad to take that to the MPO and see what their answer is.
And I, I'd like to add to that, not only at that end, but of, at the opposite end also, you know? Um, to the part that goes, uh, tie in with Highway 11. I mean, that is a, I mean, you're talking about a, a yield, a stop, another stop, another yield and, and a stoplight. Or it, it just can be a chaos of even at the other end of Vernon White, so. But it has been addressed, it has been addressed. Not only with this board, but the boards in the past. We have, uh, sent letters to, uh, um, Department of Transportation and, and, you know, it, it, it's amazing what they, they say and do and how they operate. And we understand, it takes funds to do those type things and, but yet instead, it does not appear that it's flowing at the eastern part of North Carolina. So, uh, I, I don't know what we need to do, but it's not the first time that we have a concern about this street, Vernon White, and especially on both ends of it.
Assistant Town Manager, um, you shared that you all reached out to DOT. Um, if someone could share with me, um, the date or the latest date when one has been in contact with them? And honestly, I know we're sending correspondents, we're calling, um, is, if there's somewhere that somebody can give me the source, I don't mind going there. Um, I think going there, being present, making an appointment, speaking to someone and/or inviting them to come out and see if they can get through there safely. Uh, people are traveling with their children, with elderly, and there's something that needs to be done. Um, Mayor, in terms of, uh, the board MPO, um, if you could explain those acronyms, that would be amazing. Um, and just sharing, um, when the next time you're meeting, because I would love for you to convey that to them, thank you.
Stephen, step to the podium, please.
MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization, I'm not sure off the top of my head when the next meeting is.
It's coming up. Yes, April. Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, 1/30.
Yes.
March 27th, 1/30. TAC.
Is that open to the public and is it held here? Where's the location?
The location is held at the City of Greenville, um, Public Works Building.
And it is a public?
It is a public, yeah, it's a public meeting.
Thank you.
All right, next is Town Based Transportation. And you got, uh, next steps, uh, Ms. Hawkins.
Um, Mayor, prior to going to Town Based Transportation, I don't know if there was, uh, we, we were moving towards a motion to contact DOT? Or were we?
I was gonna s- I, I was gonna say, you don't really need a motion. This is more of a discussion. Um, you, everything doesn't, I'm trying to, everything doesn't have to be a motion, because there can be discussion, because what's happening is that we're gonna ask the town staff, along with, uh, me and Johnny- along with, uh, me and Johnny, which is on the MPO, to bring back the information. Uh, so there's no need for a motion, as King, is that correct?
Y- yes, sir. I mean, a, a matter like this, the, the, um, town staff would just be instructed to send a letter and sort of a response to the, uh, concerns of the, of the council at the meeting.
Yeah, so there's no need for a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Town Based Transportation, um, Ms. Hawkins.
So I brought Town Based Transportation, uh, before the board in Jan- excuse me, before the council in January. Um, and we talked about, uh, various, um, I guess alternates to a Town Based Transportation. Um, one was the Pats Transportation. And, um, at that time, um, my belief was, or my understanding, that the Pats Transportation was to medical, uh, appointments, um, and, uh, DSS. Um, but I have since found that Pats does, um, actually, um, transport, um, citizens who, uh, live outside of the county. You have to fill out an application and you have to be eligible. You have to go through a process, um, to be made eligible. Um, and then you do have to make an appointment to say if you need to go to the store or if you need to go to the post office. And the flat fee is nine dollars one way. Eighteen dollars round trip. If you go, it's nine dollars. If you don't have nine dollars, you, that's where you are. So eighteen dollars to just say go to the post office. So I'm bringing that forward to say that I want to, um, we, we also talked about, um, perhaps writing a grant and/or perhaps seeing if someone wanted to, um, provide that service here in Winterville. What I can tell you as a resident on Mill Street in Winterville, I see people walking in the road all day, all night, when it's raining. That also brings, uh, transient, um, you, you have young people, older people, elderly's with shopping carts. You have homeless people. I had a homeless, uh, woman walk up to my door, um, and ask me for a ride this week, and that is on my Ring camera. Um, and so what I'm bringing that forward to say is that as a council, I would like for us to discuss Town Based Transportation a bit more and/or if a, a grant can be written, whatever we can do to provide some sort of, uh, alleviation to the constant walking up and down Mill Street. Um, I, I think it's not safe for the residents that are walking, or the citizens that are walking on, on the street, nor do I think it's safe for, uh, homeowners or residents there. So that is what I'm bringing up.
Okay, Ms. Hawkins, uh, these, these items that you're bringing up, uh, of course, you brought them up in January. And, you know, if you could give the staff time, appropriate time to research these items that you were bringing forth, uh, like the next item, I'm just gonna, for time's sake, that like the next item, the multi-purpose, we discussed that in last month. Uh, Fair Housing, you brought that up in January as well. And staff are doing their due diligence to get you these answers, you know? And we will provide you these answers so that you can provide back to your constituents. Um, but if you would just give them the time to research and bring forth these items that you are asking, these next, next two items and, and along with this, uh, Town Based Transportation, I think the staff and Terry are working on this to bring you back an answer, you know? So I'm just saying that so that, you know...
Mayor, where in the mi- where in the minutes can anybody go back and tell me a answer was gonna be brought back to me? And it's, and it's not to me, it's to the council.
Well, I hope you understood I wasn't just meaning it's gonna be brought back to the board. A staff, when the staff does something, they bring it back to the board, not to just one individual, okay? So that's what I'm saying is if you get a staff time, they will enlighten us all as a council of where we're going with this, okay?
I'm not okay with that, because there is nothing in the minutes nor a discussion that says they will get back to me. And I wouldn't be bringing this up because time is precious. Your time is precious, my time is precious, everybody else's time is precious. I'm bringing this up because this is what is needed. I am not being repetitive. Uh, as you can see, the town hall meeting was progress. Intersection was something brought up for the first time. Town Based Transportation, uh, there is nothing that says we'll get back. We discussed it, but there is no timeline. And if we say, uh, we're gonna look into this, perhaps a timeline, I'll get back with you in three months, six months, a year. We have discussions that have been going on for years. So this, this is what I'm saying. In terms of the multi-purpose community center, we did talk about that. But what I was bringing forward was something different. So if this was, uh, discussed or we had an agenda review, on the agenda review, if this was not deleted and/or if I was not contacted for deletion, then I'm poised to continue with these items.
Could we bring her up? Um, well, it was discussed on our review this past Thursday. And it was some ideas that was brought up and to our town manager, and it was discussed with the board on this past Thursday. Uh, there are some things that she's checking and waiting for an answer. And that is where we are at, at this moment. Uh, waiting for her to get some more information on a great idea that was shared with her right recently. I think it was the first of this week, last week.
For which item, Councilman?
The two Town Based Transportation.
Okay, this is the first that I'm hearing of it? Thank you. So, okay, so something was brought up for that? And I will respectfully wait. I don't have a problem with being patient when I know something is in process. But I did not know that. I was not privy to that. Any other item that was being worked on that we can skip over? Because this is on the item, this is on the agenda.
Um, I'm just, if I could, I think some of that information may have been supposed to be, um, discussed at the, uh, vision setting meeting as well. So I think she would, she might have been preparing for that. Um, I can't speak for her, but I believe there was some discussion that was supposed to be headed, held at the vision setting meeting, um, which will have more, more budget meetings, of course. Um, and this will all, you know, the vision setting meeting rolls into that. But, um, I believe there was some information that was gonna be coming back during that, during that meeting.
And Ms., uh, Harrell?
Uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, I do, um, understand and respect where you're coming from. Um, and the, as Assistant Town Manager, um, said, our last meeting, uh, for the vision setting, it was stated, because I too asked about benchmarks. Um, you know, when someone tells me something, I like to have an expiration date or a timeline, transparency, um, henceforth, you know, things that are going on with the website, so on and so forth. But benchmarks is what I actually asked for. And Town Manager Parker, in her absence, if I can recall, um, she said that they would start to give us more benchmarks and give us timelines. And we should be discussing, um, like the Town Based Transportation, things that, uh, your, the constituents have asked you about at the next vision setting meeting. Is that correct? Yes.
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 Did we have another vision setting meeting date set? Because I, I, I did not have that. Did we have enough? Cause we had part one, part two.
Twenty-six is? Uh, February twenty-sixth.
Yeah, February twenty-sixth.
And that's in conjunction with the recycling and, uh, soil waste.
So that would be in conjunction with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and, and I, I do recall in terms of the multi-purpose center, I know that Assistant Town Manager was going to get back with us in terms of different testing and different needs assessments. I'm, I'm very clear on that. Um, and I know it takes time and, um, we did talk about, um, Councilwoman, uh, Dr. Harrell, you did talk about benchmarks, yes. But this item that I'm talking about in terms of the multi-purpose center is not, I know there's a process. What I was going to speak on was transparency. So if we've been talking about a multi-purpose center for close to two decades and we're in the process and we're moving forward, I think that that is something that the public or the citizens would love to know. Hey, we are moving forward with this. Uh, uh, the, we are in the works of getting things, uh, take, uh, undertakings and that. So that is what I was gonna speak on. It wasn't going to be extensive. I know what is happening. But when you don't let the people who this town is about know what's going on, they will never know. So if they have to continue to wait, they don't know that this is in process and the wheels are turning. So that, that is what I was speaking to.
Do you want to address the last Fair Housing?
Yes, I do.
Uh, well, if I, in fact, since we talked about my multi-purpose center, if I could give y'all an update. I know we last spoke about, you know, this, there was, at the last meeting, we discussed about soil testing and the property that the town had acquired. Uh, and since then, I was able to get in touch with the company, uh, reviewed, reviewed the report and got their assessment. Basically, the property that the town purchased will be able to sustain the facility that we are looking at possibly building. Um, essentially, uh, the soils will, may need some improvements. The, of course, the bigger the building is, the more improvements will have to be made, uh, with various types of, um, sub-soil structure to improve the ability to hold the weight of the facility. Um, essentially, any one-story building that goes on the property will be fine. Um, anything, uh, anything larger than that, once you get to two stories, though, you'll have to start adjusting what you do underneath to, uh, bolster the facility. Um, and then the higher you go, the more work you have to do under, underground, so it's supported. So the report did come back, the property is usable and it is, um, you know, we can, um, kind of check that one off the box there, the list.
Thank you.
That's what I wanna hear. Thank you.
We'll find that out.
We're working on the timelines and...
You're working on the timelines and what?
Timelines and scheduling was what we discussed at the last meeting. So we're unable to present the council with a general idea of what that process will look like. I would wanna say that the meeting on the twenties, um, the sanitation meeting was not actually part of the vision setting process. So we had one vision setting meeting, I just point of clarification here.
Okay.
I feel like it, it's warranted, given the conversation. Um, essentially, um, the meeting coming up is for sanitation. If y'all wanna add an item to the agenda, I believe y'all have already added one tonight. Um, you know, we can certainly follow that up with another item. Um, but just be warranted, that conversation is gonna be pretty heavy. Um, it's gonna be a, a lot of discussion on sanitation. Um, so I'm not sure how convoluted you would want to get in that meeting.
Assistant Town Manager, I, I, um, did not know or think that that would be merged in. Um, I knew that there was some benchmarks and that you guys would get back to us. Um, I just was speaking to being transparent with the public. I know that it's going to take some time. I know, um, Mayor Protim, um, Dr. Harrell spoke about, um, benchmarks and needs assessments and putting out surveys, uh, to, um, our residents and which, which I, uh, spoke to that we needed surveys. Um, with the needs assessment, there will be those different facets. I just was speaking to allowing the people to understand what is going on. Um, for me, it doesn't have to be on the sanitation, uh, agenda. That's just me, but the town council will speak, cause I know sanitation is another huge topic and, and, and it has its intricacies.
I, and just to make sure, I, I didn't wanna, want y'all to think that that meeting was scheduled to be a vision setting and that it was just, just for sanitation originally.
All right. The Fair Housing?
So just to speak to Fair Housing, I know I brought this be- uh, before the council in January. Um, and I was speaking to eleven Main Street and the, um, the, the price of the rent there. Um, if I'm not mistaken, it is at about, um, eighteen fifty a month, I'm not sure. Um, and that was at the lower end of the spectrum. And then I, uh, spoke to Fair Housing. And when we have developers, uh, come propose, uh, new, uh, sites to us, um, how are we speaking to, uh, making, uh, housing affordable? Um, and so in, um, in our ordinances, in our town ordinances, there is something, um, about Fair Housing. And it is something about, um, if you have, uh, if you feel like you are being discriminated against or if you have a grievance, that you need to bring that to the town manager. I just wanted to speak to that, to let the citizens of Winterville know that they do have a voice. And if you feel a way about Fair Housing, share that. Come out and share that. Um, I, I was also able to speak to, um, the, um, person in charge of Fair Housing in the City of Greenville, James Rhodes. Um, and he shared some of what we discussed in terms of developers getting incentives to lower rents or to, to lower, uh, mortgage payments. So that is all I wanted to speak to. Um, according to our ordinance, if you feel like the housing is not fair, you have an opportunity to share that with the town manager, um, and Assistant Town Manager. Bring it to their attention. That is what I wanted to speak to.
Thank you. All right. Items, uh, for future agenda, uh, future work sessions. Okay. Announcements.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'll take, take that one. Okay, so getting toward the end here, um, for announcements, we've got, uh, the twenty twenty-four, uh, primary early voting, uh, will be held in the Winterville Community Room from February fifteenth to March second. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, February nineteenth at seven PM at Town Hall Assembly Room. We have a Board of Adjustments Meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February twentieth at seven PM in the Town Hall Assembly Room. Uh, that we have our, uh, Town Council Recycling Solid Waste Work Session scheduled for February twenty-sixth at five thirty PM, Town Hall Assembly Room. We have a Human Relations Board Meeting scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-second at seven PM, Town Hall Executive Conference Room. Recreation Advisory Board Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh at six thirty PM at the Operations Center. The twenty twenty-four election primary, um, is scheduled for March fifth. That will be held at the Community Room and the Operations Center, uh, Training Room. We have a General Review Meeting scheduled for Thursday, March seventh at four PM, Town Hall Executive Conference Room. We have the Easter Extravaganza scheduled for March ninth at eleven AM to one PM. We have the Easter Extravaganza scheduled for March ninth at eleven AM to one PM at the Winnebago Recreation Park. And we have our regular town ske- Town Council Meeting scheduled for March eleventh at six PM for Town Hall Assembly Room. And you also have the meeting, um, on, uh, March seventh that was added tonight for the Town Hall. Kind of reiterate that, that was gonna be at, uh, six, from six to seven.
Okay. Um. King?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, no report tonight. I do point out that we have a closed session, uh, pursuant to the statute identified in your agenda. It's principally to, uh, speak with the, the town attorney regarding a privileged and confidential matter. Um, other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Lisa.
Thank you to everybody who came out this evening. Thank you to staff, thank you to members of the community, thank you to our elected officials, um, Commissioner Smith, County Commissioner Smith for joining us tonight. I thank everybody, um, I want to assure you that we are all, uh, members of this community. We're proud of our, of our community and we want to see growth and progress. Um, I do want us to do so wisely. Um, I want us to take into consideration things like our, our infrastructure and long-term goals and make sure that we are doing things in a manner that is manageable and sustainable and that will benefit all of our constituents. Um, thank you once again, and thank you for being here this evening.
Ms. Robinson?
I'd like to thank everyone that's here for the meeting tonight, our citizens and our staff. I appreciate all that you do. And our citizens, just make sure you always let, we are your elected officials. Let us know the things that you want to see in our community, the things that you have concerns about.
All right, Harrell.
Um, just to echo, um, Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Robinson, thank you to the staff for all that you do, um, and things that I don't know that you do, that you do, right? Um, so thank you for all your hard work. Thank you all, uh, for joining us tonight. Um, I'm happy to see a lot of faces, um, in the audience, so continue to come back and learn more and grow with us as a community. Also want to say, uh, February is, um, heart month and so make sure that you take the time to exercise. Also, women, listen to your heart, right? Because we are, um, prone for heart disease and things of that nature. Um, so cardiovascular health and just again, live well and be well. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins? Ms. Hawkins?
So, um, I just wanted to say, it was a wonderful, uh, Black History Program yesterday. I would like to acknowledge and thank Ms. Matt DeJesus for, uh, putting that together. Um, we had young, old, excuse me, young, beautifully seasoned, um, and, uh, we had all demographics there. Um, and when we say the people, when I say the people, I'm not saying it to be divisive. I am saying the people, I'm being decisive. The Constitution of the United States says we the people and we are the people. A- as I sit up here as a Town Councilwoman, I am also the people and a citizen here. I'd like to thank the staff for all you do. I'd like to thank law enforcement for protecting and securing us. I'd like to ta- thank Chief Williams, uh, for when I left the last meeting, he ensured that I got into my car safely. That meant a lot to me. It's the little things that mean so much and what I say again, we are better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank this board, what, uh, this new board that is really coming together and I thank God for that. I thank God for this, the staff that we do have here and, uh, I, I'd like to thank, uh, our, uh, County Commissioner being here tonight, uh, Council, uh, County Commissioner Smith. And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Hunter Sucker for coming out tonight and, and the work that he helped out yesterday with the, uh, program that we had at the Train Depot. I just wanna say thank you. And Ms. Maddie and your staff, uh, y'all did an excellent job. And I thank you for the recognition that you, uh, that you gave me yesterday and all our citizens here tonight especially. Without you, there is no need for us, you know? So, uh, anything that you, you see Johnny Moore not doing correctly, don't talk about it, tell him. I, I, I'm, I'm on enough that you can be able to tell me, so help me hit, hit my hand and I'll put the other hand out so you can hit that, because I will make him stay from time to time. Uh, also, I'd like to say to everyone, especially all the ladies and the men's, to Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanna send a, uh, get well soon out to several staff members who, you know, had to put, caused a little bit of a scramble today, um, but we all worked together as a team. Everybody stepped up to help keep this meeting on schedule and keep everything from falling apart and, um, you know, some critical people were out and so it was a, it was a team effort to get, to be able to pull all this together and, and still keep things going so we could still have this meeting. So just hope they get well, the people that are out sick, and thank you to everybody that stepped up and helped.
And also too, um, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you, Assistant Town Manager, uh, for your role tonight. Uh, thank you Willie Gay, uh, for your role tonight. And, but that just goes to show you what type of town we have. When one person is down, someone else picks it up. Uh, that shows you what type of board we have. When one person is down, the other person picks it up. This is not a me, 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 and it's not a I, I, I. We are a town. This town was here before me, this town gonna be here after me. But it's only as good as what we put into it. And we're gonna do our best to make sure that we move this town forward. With that being said, we will now, uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session. Second. Got a motion made by Councilwoman Robinson, second by, uh, Councilman Moy. Will you please vote? Uh, right. Have we voted? Okay. Uh, King, did you have to read that little statement before we, or you don't?
No, sir, the reference in the agenda and my, my, um, mention of it.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir. Yeah, I was gonna tell them to, yeah, I already told them. Lisa and Ms. Hawkins, y'all need to, before you go into closed session, uh, need Kristen, you gotta sign some papers.
There's an oath for the, oath for the later cities.
Take the oath for the later city, okay?
Sure, sure.
They gotta vote.
Ready?
Once they vote.
Yeah, once, once you vote, once you vote, once you vote. He's bringing it up. Willie, you want us to do it the old-fashioned way? All right, okay. All vote by raising their right hand. All opposed, motion carried, go into closed session. Okay.
I see you.
You don't want it.
I don't want it.
Grab out a whip, I said, I didn't know if you saw it.
That's on my way.
Enjoy it. Enjoy it, alright? That's it, take your time, alright? Alright.
Yeah, Lacy's going right now.
I was ready to go. I'm gonna have to tell them more.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Huh?
I appreciate it. It's an important part of making it over the long. Oh my goodness. Got a little busy during the middle of the line. Hope I didn't mess it up.
Uh, yeah. Point me to the end. So, I'm gonna go. So, I'm gonna go. Sorry. We'll be back soon. Soon. There. There. There we go.
Yeah, Lacy's going right now.
That would be right and, yeah, I was ready. Ready and so. Because. That's not how I'm supposed to. I'm really excited. Because I'm really good. That's been so long. Hopefully. And. Well, they're like. So. That was very long. Yeah, but I don't know.
Well, there's that couple of lines. A couple of that.
Yeah. And, and it's up to.
My, my good answer is.
I know.
Hey, I haven't had a shoot made it out for me, but okay. Kinda made it sound like.
I agree. But all that.
Oh, right. We're carrying. This is.
So she won't believe that's what it is. But I don't know. I mean, I ain't gonna. Maybe.
Sorry about that. Oh, uh. Hey. Now, we sit up here. Sometimes I'm so worried. I'm like a little steam. I can't hold the last.
I got her. I hear you. I got it. I feel it falls down. But everybody, I don't know. They've recognized me. Appreciate it. Oh, yeah. I know. I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go. Alright, alright. I'm coming. Alright, brother. Ah. Ooh.